Good evening, everyone. I call this evening's meeting to order. Trustee Messick?
Here.
Trustee Rocco?
Here.
Trustee Sheehan?
Here.
Trustee Casera?
Here.
Trustee Lotner?
Here.
Trustee Zora?
Here.
President DiCipio is absent this evening. A quorum is present. I ask for a motion to appoint a president pro tem.
I move to appoint Scott Messick as a president pro tem for this evening's board meeting.
Second.
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Rocco?
Yes.
Trustee Sheehan?
Yes.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Lotner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Will you please rise for your pledge of allegiance? The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome everybody in the night. First item on the agenda after the roll call, which was already done now would be the swearing in ceremony of probationary police officer Tim Burry. All right. Tim is 24 years of age, single, and resides in Chicago. He's a graduate of Western Illinois, go Leatherneck University, with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. He comes from a police department family with his father being presently employed as a Chicago police officer for many years. He graduated from the Cook County Sheriff's Police Academy, held at Triton College in early December of 2017. In addition, he has recently completed the department's field training program consisting of 10 weeks with his FTO, Officer Wilk. Presently, he is assigned to both day and afternoon shifts until May of this year, when he will be assigned to the midnight shift. We would like to formally welcome Tim to the LaGrange Park Village family and wish him the very best on a safe and secure career. And now, Amanda, yours.
With your right hand and with your left hand. I, Timothy Burry.
I, Timothy Burry.
hereby solemnly swear.
Hereby solemnly swear.
That I will uphold and defend.
That I will uphold and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully carry out.
And I will faithfully carry out.
All duties.
All duties.
imposed upon and entrusted in me.
Imposed upon and entrusted in me.
As a probationary police officer.
As a probationary police officer.
For the Village of LaGrange Park.
For the Village of LaGrange Park.
Welcome, Tim. This is the start of your career. A few things. One thing is, is any time that somebody comes into our family, it's something important for us. The biggest thing that I'll say is about the career. And if you look at the audience that's out here today, it's about courage. Courage is the willingness to confront bad, evil. And in today's world, today's society that's out there, it's very important that our community realizes, and the dedicated individuals that are in the back, and Tim is going to become part of that family now, is that they have that courage. They have that special thing. I want to let this community know, they are safe and secure because of them and because of what you will be doing. And that makes me even more proud to be up here. A little bit about Tim. He ended up having a little bit of a unique journey to get where he's at. He had to do everything that usually takes about two months and three days. He had to go through all the different testings. He had to get fitted. He had to be ready. By the time he was given his opportunity from Wednesday to Friday, he was in the academy seat on Monday. So it was that quick. And it's our benefit that we're silent, because he has shown through Officer Wilk being the initial to this, stating that he is a duty-willing officer. So I applaud him on that. I look for good things from him, just like I do the rest of our staff. I will say, with today being noted, that, you know, your father, who I applaud for his time in this career, and then I duly note that your mother, I believe, is going to be the one that actually pins this on. So I will say, Mom will need you up here. I see where Timothy got his sight. And so. Congrats again, Tim. Great lady. Welcome aboard.
Thank you and welcome. All right, next on the agenda, public participation. Any agenda-related items? Anybody wish to speak? All right, seeing none. Next, the consent agenda. Amanda?
The items on this evening's consent agenda are as follows. A, approval of minutes, village board meeting, January 23, 2018. Work session meeting, February 13, 2018. B, Action 2018, road paving program, motion to award a contract to K-5 Construction Corporation in the amount of $2,092,215.50 plus a 5% contingency for unforeseen conditions. See, Action 2018 Sewer Repairs Project, motion to accept the proposal of Suburban General Construction, Inc., in the amount of $73,210 plus 5% contingency should field conditions vary. To be expensed to the fiscal year 2017-18 sewer fund. And two, motion to authorize the village president to execute the contract documents. D, Action, motion to authorize the president and chairperson of the finance committee to sign the register for bills and authorize the treasurer and village clerk to sign checks in the payment of operating bills and salaries as itemized in the check registers. And lastly, E, motion to authorize the treasurer and village clerk to sign the checks in the payment of payroll and other bills that become due between this date and March 27, 2018, with subsequent approval of the payroll register and voucher register by the Board of Trustees at its regular meeting to be held on March 27, 2018.
Any comments? Amanda Calderon?
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Rocco?
Yes.
Trustee Sheehan?
Yes.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Lotner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, next, village managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I just had a couple of reminders regarding the upcoming budget process. We have the first finance committee meeting to review the budget on March 13, and potentially a second finance committee meeting on March 27. Each of these meetings will take place before the regularly scheduled meetings on those evenings at 6:00. And there is also a public hearing on the budget on April 10. And that public hearing on the budget will take place at 7:15. And we are finalizing the budget document at this time, and those will be sent out at the end of this week, so that you have that for your review in anticipation of those upcoming meetings. And that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Julia. Next, administration committee, trustee Lotner.
Thank you, Mr. President, pro tem. This evening, I have a few items to report on in the administration area. First is the Arbor Day nominations. The National Arbor Day is set for Friday, April 27. The village is accepting nominations right now to plant a tree in honor or in memory of a person or a group that has made a positive contribution to the community or whose achievements deserve special recognition. To submit your nomination, please visit the village website at www.lagrangepark.org to download a nomination form or contact Sandy B. College for more information. Nominations will be accepted through April 13. The tree will be planted in a public space, for example, in a parkway or in a park, et cetera, during a public ceremony in late April or early May. And a small plaque mentioning the honoree will be installed at the base of the tree, so we encourage you to submit nominations. Second item is the village combines the plan commission and the zoning board of appeals. In January, the village board approved the transition of the responsibilities of the plan commission to the zoning board of appeals and renamed the ZBA the Planning and Zoning Commission. The existing ZBA members transitioned to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission, which held its first meeting on February 20. Consistent with the schedule of the former ZBA, the Plan and Zoning Commission will conduct regular monthly meetings on the third Tuesday of the month as needed. And the third and last item from this area this evening is regarding their community e-briefs. As a reminder, the village would like to continue to encourage residents to stay connected with what is happening in LaGrange Park by signing up for our community e-briefs, our weekly electronic newsletter that is emailed out each Friday. The village currently has over 2,000 subscribers. Residents may sign up for e-briefs by going to the homepage of the village's website at www.lagrangepark.org. And that concludes my report from the administration area this evening, Mr. President, pro tem.
Thank you, trustee Lotner. Next is building and zoning. Trustee Zara?
Thank you, Mr. President, pro tem. I'd like to report the building activities for January of 2018. Twenty-nine building permits were issued in January compared to 21 last January. Estimated construction costs and permit fees conducted, collected for the month were down substantially compared to January of last year. This is due to a couple of substantial type of permits issued last January. Fifty inspections were conducted this past January compared to 84 last January. Three were not approved. The court case for a home in the 800 block of Beach has been extended. Although the required repairs have been completed, the judge has granted a requested two-month extension for the fines to be paid to the village. After a series of events, including a water leak and work taking place without permits, the building department has declared a two-flat in the 800 block of North LaGrange Road uninhabitable. The tenant has been relocated. The property is in foreclosure and is currently owned by Fannie Mae. The building department is working with maintenance company hired by Fannie Mae to resolve outstanding issues. The cell tower construction located behind the CSJ campus continues to progress. The monopole has been installed and work is progressing on adding equipment. And that is all I have, Mr. President, pro tem. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Zara. Next is Engineering Capital Projects, trustee Casera.
And thank you, Mr. President, pro tem. This evening, I have three items to report on. First item, National Power Harding has completed the cleaning and televising of sewers ahead of the 2018 street paving program. The video information was used to identify the sewer repairs and maintenance needed on those lines. This work will be completed prior to construction of the 2018 street paving program improvements. The project is currently out for bid and contract documents to perform the repairs will be brought to the village board for their consideration in February. The second item, the Harding Avenue improvements, Brainerd Avenue to Kemmon Avenue, appeared on the Illinois Department of Transportation, IDOT, January project letting. The apparent low bidder is Arrow Road Construction. Their bid in the amount of $857,000 is $192,542 below the estimated construction cost for the project. IDOT is expected to award the contract in February with an anticipated construction start in May. All work on the project is expected to be completed by late fall. Third and final item, design work on the 2018 street paving program was completed, and the project is currently out for bid. The construction this year will be performed under a single contract in order to attract more potential bidders. The results of this bid will be brought back to the village board for their consideration in February. That concludes my report, Mr. President, pro tem.
Thank you, trustee Casera. Next, we will go on to public safety. I will start with the police department summary of activities for January of this year. Total crimes reported for the first month of 2018 are similar to last year, with 30 this year compared to 26 in 2017. Overall, police activity is slightly higher, with 836 incidents reported in January 2018 compared to 810 for the same timeframe last year. Total tickets issued for the month of January were lower due to weather-related incidents, 506 for this year compared to 570 through January of 2017. Coffee with the chief and staff will take place at Matone's Restaurant on Wednesday, March 14, from 7:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Also, session three of the next Police Citizen Academy, which will take place from April 12 through May 10, on Thursdays, from 6:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m., held at the Village Hall Boardroom. Please be aware that the spots are limited or on first-come, first-served basis. The coordinator for PCA is Officer Chris Dempsey at 708-352-7711, extension 275, or email C. Dempsey, D-E-M-P-S-E-Y, at lagrangepark.org. On March 7, Officer Chester Louth, a veteran police officer with 29 years of dedicated service to the community, will be retiring. His overall knowledge and established relationships within the community will be missed on a daily basis. We wish Chester the very best on his future endeavors and personally thank him for all he's done for the village and its residents in making LaGrange Park one of the safest small cities in the state of Illinois. Which means that Officer Burry's not going to be the junior guy for very long. Onto the fire department report. EMS incidents this month were 138. There were 162 in January of 2017. Fire rescue incidents this month, 34. There were 40 in January of 2017. Fire department officers began to meet to discuss planning for our next recruitment and hiring process. Out of such, the fire department's planning to hire this spring. Applications are now available at the village hall and online and due April 10, with the orientation taking place the evening of April 11. Please see the village's website and the fire department Facebook page for additional information. CPR and AED recertification training was provided for the fire department personnel. Training was provided on the use of new burn gel and dressing being deployed on our ambulances. Firefighter paramedics, Mike Schwerin, Matt Scott, and Brian Whitman, along with firefighter EMTs Andy Chorley, Matt Dahl, and Mike Hughes, all received certification as instructors for CPR and AED operation. Early in the month, staff traveled to Pierce Manufacturing to conduct an in-build of our new ladder truck being constructed. The semi-annual inspection and testing was conducted for our emergency service generated village hall, and during the month, senior fire department staff, along with staff from neighboring fire departments and law enforcement, participated in hands-on rescue task force training at a school in a neighboring community. This training was the beginning of an effort to more closely train with neighboring communities, along with fire and law enforcement together, and to help modify and improve policies. During the month, we sent an engine to Westmont for two very significant Mabus-level fire alarms, five days apart, involving multifamily buildings. And that concludes the fire department report. And we do have one action item. As you are aware, the village currently contracts our full-time shift paramedic firefighter personnel from Public Safety Services, Inc. We have done so for more than 16 years, when PSSI was awarded their initial contract, replacing a different service provider. The most current contract was renewed last year after a village board approval at the February 2017 board meeting for a period beginning May 1, 2017, and running through April 30 of 2020. Approximately one month ago, we were notified, the president of PSSI, Mr. Gary Frederick, that an agreement had been reached for Paramedic Services of Illinois Incorporated, or PSI, to acquire the assets of PSSI. As part of this merger acquisition, both companies, PSSI and PSI, have requested that the village of LaGrange Park sign a new contract with PSI to replace the current contract. According to both companies, following the merger acquisition, Mr. Frederick would remain with PSI, along with all of the current employees assigned to our contract, if they so choose. There would also be no changes to the agreed-upon annual fees for service for the remaining time of our existing contract. Initially, when asked to sign the new contract, staff and our village attorney expressed concern as to why the new contract was necessary, along with concern about some of the language included in said new contract. Staff had several telephone discussions with Mr. Frederick of PSSI, and also met with both PSSI and PSI to discuss those concerns and the merger acquisition overall. Our attorney also communicated with the attorney for PSI, and based upon such, some final revisions were made, and we now have a contract that is acceptable to the attorney and village staff. In fact, with a few minor exceptions, the language is nearly identical to our current contract. Staff recommends entering into the new contract for services with Paramedic Services of Illinois. And as you well know, our emergency medical services are one of our most important services we provide our residents. On a daily basis, this service directly impacts the health and comfort of our residents when they are in need of an emergency medical care. And in many instances, this service can have a direct impact on the life and death of a resident. As such, it is imperative the village continues the high-quality service level that we provide. PSSI has committed to retain the employees currently assigned to the contract and at the same clause to the village for the remainder of the current contract. Also, as noted, they have worked with us to provide us with contract languages nearly identical to our current language. Furthermore, it appears there are some additional employee benefits provided to employees of PSI, which PSSI did or could not offer. In addition, Paramedic Services of Illinois appears to have a solid reputation. They have been in business for over 42 years and have contracts with 24 other municipal fire departments or fire protection districts. They also have a contract to provide EMS for a county-wide EMS system and a contract for a critical care transport team for Good Samaritan Hospital. Last year, they acquired Fire Safety Consultants, Incorporated, the firm we have already been using for many years, to review specific fire protection system plans. Lastly, staff is very familiar with PSI and some of the key employees of the company. As PSSI will no longer be an option, we believe that PSI is the best company to be able to live up to the current standards and levels of service that we and our residents expect. So now, representatives from Paramedic Services of Illinois or PSI will be providing a presentation about their company. The president of Public Safety Services, Inc., will also be on hand in case the board has any questions for either provider. And said, after that, do you want to make the motion after that, or prior? Let's do the presentation first, that's.
Okay. I'm not sure who's going to do it, but we have Mr. Larry Robbins, Bob Horak, and Mike Hanson from PSSI, and, or PSI, and Gary Frederick from PSSI, our current provider. So, one of you gentlemen, want to go ahead? Think you're going to have to do it up here. I do not think she's put the up thing in.
Yeah. There you go. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us. Again, my name is Larry Robbins. I'm the vice president of operations of Paramedic Services of Illinois. And I was asked here to come tonight to tell you a little bit about our company and perhaps what you can expect from our services. I always like to start off our presentations by telling you a little bit how we got where we are today. In the early inception, our founder, Earl Field, came up with our company philosophy, which we follow, and we honestly believe that is the reason we've continued to grow and prosper over the years. Number one, always provide the highest level of patient care. Number two, set the standard for paramedic excellence, as well as we also like to be the pioneer in the program. If there's a new piece of equipment or new protocol or something like that, we do like to get involved in the early stages of that feasibility study. Strive to make the quality of life better for the people we come in contact with on a daily basis. That's not necessarily always our patients, it's just our philosophy in general. And last but not least, exceed our clients' expectations. So what kind of services does PSI provide? Well, first of all, we provide paramedic and paramedic firefighting services to municipalities and fire protection districts. Secondly, we provide state-of-the-art ambulance building service for communities. And lastly, we provide fire protection plan reviews, building, fire, and life safety plan reviews, as well as consulting services and seminars on a national basis. Quick overview of PSI. First of all, we were founded under this corporate name in 1975. We are indeed a family-owned and operated company, very similar to Gary's company. The owner is Mary Field. We have been a leading provider in contractual paramedic service for 42 years. We were actually the original pioneers of this concept here in Illinois. The company officers that stand before you, Bob Horak, Mike Hanson, and myself, we have over 124 years of experience in EMS and with the tenure with PSI. We currently provide service to 26 different communities. We operate out of 13 EMS systems, and we have approximately 300 employees now that serve with us. We're very well-respected in the industry. We're very proud of that, and we've worked very hard over the past 42 years to acquire such a reputation. As a company, we respond to over 55,000 emergency responses per year. We have 20 ambulance building services that we provide service for, as well as fire rescue services. And again, as previously stated, we're proud to have FSCI join our family in 2017. Organizational chart, just wanted to share with you a little bit about our flow, our chain of command. Obviously, the president, Mary Field, has got three vice presidents, and they stand before you this evening to operate the company on her behalf. We're large enough where we have our own human resource director, very well-established senior member that's been with us, again, over 40 years. So he's, his job is to find good personnel that can bring them into the organization. In larger areas, we have area-wide supervisors to maintain a good flow of communications amongst our contracts in designated areas. Here, we will have, continue to have a paramedic coordinator, which acts as the liaison strictly between the department and PSI, to make sure they're actually the boots on the ground and make sure everything is going well here, and we interact together to make sure that we're all pulling the wagon in the same direction, providing that quality service that we're all seeking. Assistant coordinators we have in our larger contracts to maintain a reasonable span of control. We like to see a span of control generally of five to one, one supervisor or assistant for every five, or five individual paramedic firefighters. And lastly, the most important people are out there on a daily basis, providing high-quality service, our paramedics and our EMTs. Speaking about our membership, PSI has long understood the fact that our employees or our members are a great asset. That is how this company has grown over the years. So in order to attract and retain these professionals, we want to provide a salary structure, as well as a benefit packet that reflects their professionalism. Once employed by PSI, they may be employees, but they are now members of our family, you know, and we're committed to taking care of them as a family organization. So speaking of that, I won't go through a lot of these for time constraints, but what I will say is that, you know, everyone here will be making the current salary. PSI is going to obviously honor all the salary structure that is in place here. But the employees assigned here, or the members assigned here, will have an enhanced benefit package. We have a holiday pay stipend for those who serve their tour duties on a federal holiday, the seven federal holidays. We provide our members with employee evaluations, allowing them to know how they're doing within our organization. We concentrate on their strengths, and we point out, of course, any weaknesses. But most importantly, we set goals and objectives for them for the future. It helps them build their professional career and make them better paramedic or paramedic firefighters. We have our own 401K retirement plan. We're very proud. It's managed by fidelity with oversight by Merrill Lynch, both highly recognized companies. Our plan is. We're very proud that this year we started our flex spending accounts. We heard from our membership that that would be something that they would very much enjoy. So they have two options. Option one is the healthcare flex spending, which allows them to pay their medical expenses like deductibles and co-pays with pre-tax dollars. And the second one is for childcare. Many people who work require childcare and that can be very expensive. So again, we, we have a flex spending program which allows them to pay those childcare services in, under pre-tax dollars. Of course, professional liability insurance, it takes care of the employees, of course, protects the company and also protects you as, you as a client. Those who are eligible, we have off-duty disability and that takes care of people who have problems which occur off the duty, off-duty, whether it be through an accident or through a medical emergency. We do honor our service awards for our members when they hit certain plateaus, they're honored to that service. We have employee assistant program for whatever concerns the individual or their families, whether it be financial, marital, whatever the case may be. There's always someone there that can, they can reach out to. They can contact them by phone, by website, or face-to-face counseling, all at the expense of PSI. Everyone is given an allotment of sick time and paid time off. Graveyard leave, God forbid, someone loses an immediate family member, we give them time off with full compensation to take care of a family. Switch time privileges, we do allow our members to do switch time, which is very common in fire service, as long as it doesn't interfere with the operations of the department and follows our policy procedure and the Department of Labor standards. EMS tuition reimbursement, I think this is a very important thing, that we try to encourage all of our members to get additional certifications like advanced cardiac life support, pediatric life support, pre-hospital trauma life support, things of that nature. They take the class, reimburse them for that, and it's a good thing. Number one, it's good for the employee's growth and their professional development. Number two, it's good for PSI because it helps our reputation, bringing great people to the table. It's good for the community because you hired us, but most importantly, it translates to great patient care. And that's the most important thing. We also, every four years, EMTs and paramedics go through a relicensing and there's a state fee for that. We reimburse our employees for, for that relicensing. And of course, we supply the uniforms and turnout gear. Our hiring process, which I'm sure is very important to you all, how do we bring people into our organization? We're very proud of this. It's why we have our own human resource director. First and foremost, we always try to survey for local talent. We try to reward people within the community and then work our way outward if a position would become available. They would normally come in, complete an application, and then they go through an interview with our human resource director. When that is done, we complete a background check. We start with a professional background check. We check where they went to paramedic school, how they did, where they did their internship or ride time as a paramedic, current and past employers, as well as outsourcing national criminal history check, motor vehicle check, and social security trace. Once we garner all the information together where we feel comfortable with it, we'd like to have this person in our organization or not. You would only see people that we would like to have in our organization representing Then they would interview with the department, the chief or his delegated authority. If, once they be found acceptable, we, if they're not in the EMS system, that would be our responsibility to test them into the system. Then they would go for a complete comprehensive physical, including brook screening. Then they come back to the office for the hiring check, which is, you know, basically benefits and payroll, things like that. But we also then provide additional training. We take care of the bloodborne pathogen, the TB training, scene safety, as well as proper lifting techniques. Those are all important things in our profession. And of course, they have ongoing training as, as time allows. After that, they go for uniform fitting based on your requirements. They would enter into any department orientation that the chief would deem necessary and then they would be assigned and they would be recording for it. So that's kind of our flow of events. These are our current 26 communities that we provide service for, works in almost every game of EMS, as the reports say, we have one county, you know, several municipal and fire protection district, as well as a hospital-based critical care team. Everyone asks, is there gonna be any changes? Well, most importantly, there's no need to be concerned. You're gonna see very little, very little, if any, change. We don't plan any changes to the daily operations. We're doing the exact same thing. We anticipate just to be seamless. That high-quality patient care that you're accustomed to will indeed be continuing. The employees will enjoy the same salaries, but as I told you before, they will have an enhanced benefit package, which I'm sure they'll appreciate. We don't anticipate at this time any personnel changes from what I've been told. And of course, we will continue to provide that highly-rated insurance carriers. Intangible advantages of PSI that we can bring, PSI is very proud of the fact that we have people actually appointed to very prestigious state committees. Here are some of them, the chairman of the state EMS advisory council, co-chair of the Illinois Fire Chiefs Association EMS committee, chairman of state planning and legislative committee, state EMS strategic planning committee, state EMS task force for EMS funding, as well as the special task force for the mobile integrated healthcare. I'm sure some of you have heard about that. It's perhaps the next phase into pre-hospital, pre-hospital care that can be provided by paramedics on a community level. Our commitment, we know as paramedics, Bob, Mike, and myself, we are paramedics, we've been a paramedic for 42 years. We all know that we deal with the most valuable commodity on the face of the earth and that's human life. So when your residents have an emergency, they're looking for experienced, professional, high-quality care. That is our commitment. PSI is committed to exceeding the expectations of the public as well as our clients. Our founder, Earl Field, said that PSI doesn't have the biggest, be the biggest, just has to be the best, and we believe we are. One of the things, approximately nine years ago, we lost Earl to an illness. And it was a very tough day and it's been an ongoing thing for us, but Earl was our mentor and we have been charged with the responsibility to run his company as if he would be standing right next to me right now. And we've made that commitment, all of us, to make this company as he would like it and so he'd be very proud of it. Again, just a quick overview, again, we do ambulance and fire rescue building if you ever have the need. And lastly, as we've talked about, Fire Safety Consultants. Our home base is out of Elgin, Illinois, and we have a satellite office up in, up in And lastly, I would like to point out that PSI has been a longtime friend of the fire service. We're very thankful for the opportunity to work in this arena and we find ways to give back by being members and sponsors into a number of different areas in the EMS and firefighting Again, just thank you for having us here this evening. I hope I was able to answer some of your questions that you had, that you had in the back of your mind. Our ultimate goal is to earn your trust as well as your business, and we look forward to a long-term lasting relationship with you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody have any questions? Trustee Lauder?
Thank you, Mr. President. Pro Tem. Thanks, Larry. Very, very informative. I did have a couple of questions. I know that general terms and conditions are the same or perhaps even better in some areas, but one question is the village's liability coverage to us, is that the same or better than what we had?
My answer to that is, yes, it is. The limits are the same. The carrier is the same. It's a little better, actually, because we have, our insurance is occurrence versus claims made. And I won't get into the big details of the differences in that, but occurrence is a better form of insurance.
Okay. And then the, the enhanced benefit package that you talked about for Kurt's staff that are on board, when and if you would need to bring in new employees, will they be covered under that as well or is it a different benefit package?
No, our benefit pack is standard. We do, we do that company-wide. It was determined by our founder, Earl Field, that we should give all of our members a well-rounded benefit pack to protect not only them but their families in time of need and to carry them through their career with us and to fund their retirement plan so after their years of service with us, they can retire in a comfortable fashion. So he and his wife now, Mary Field, continues to make that commitment, so we're very proud of our benefit pack.
But, but new employees coming in to serve our community will have the same level of benefits as those that are in place today? I mean, they haven't, there hasn't been anything negotiated on behalf of the people that are there now?
Oh, no, no.
Yeah, okay.
It's, it's standard.
It's your, your standard enhanced.
Everyone enjoys, including myself. That's just, that's what it is.
Okay.
I'm going to see more across the board.
And, and the last question I had is, in the hopefully unlikely event that you have two or three or whatever, you know, half, half of the people get sick or whatever on staff, how do you fulfill backfill? I mean, do you have a pool or just bring it from other communities to make sure that we've got the appropriate level of staffing?
That, that's a great question. Yes, we, we would have backups that would be available. Again, we have 300, you know, full-time people within the organization and we have, we do a number of communities in the Loyola system, which, you know, you've heard. And we can do some free planning on that, getting some part-time people as well. We always like to do that if that's acceptable to the administration. So it never has seemed to be a problem. We also have a policy too, that if you cannot leave your post until properly released, so if somebody calls at last minute, someone has to stay until we can, you know, find that movement. So it's worked for 40-plus years and, you know, we try to stay ahead of that curve because we, we do know that exists, you know, things happen.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have, Mr. President.
Trustee Sheehan?
No, sir.
Trustee Zara? No? Okay. Thank you, sir. We look forward to the continued excellent service we got and look forward to fruitful partnership.
Thank you.
All right, I will now entertain a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pro Tem. With the information presented tonight and in our board packets and the, the questions clarified, I'd like to submit a motion to approve a resolution to allow the village manager to execute a certain agreement with Paramedic Services of Illinois Incorporated to provide paramedic personnel from April 1st, 2018 to April 30th, 2020.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Amanda, please call a roll.
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Rocco?
Yes.
Trustee Sheehan?
Yes.
Trustee Lautner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
And that concludes public safety. On to Public Works Committee, Trustee Sheehan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pro Tem. Following is the monthly report for January. Public Works operations, snow operations continued in January with crews salting and plowing all village streets, alleys, and parking areas. Eighty-two hours of regular time, 93.25 hours of overtime were spent plowing and salting. 738.69 miles of town were salted and plowed using 217 tons of salt. Tree maintenance, trimming inspections were performed during 85 regular hours. Six trees were removed to the disease or being a hazard to the public. 214 regular hours were spent on the maintenance of public works, equipment, and vehicles. 128 hours were spent filling potholes and patching water excavations with approximately 18 tons of asphalt. 143 day shift hours were spent on public and ground maintenance around Public Works Facility, Village Hall, and 31st Street. Work orders were completed with crews removing roadkill, making sign repairs, and attending to residents' concerns. Water Department operation over 394 day shift hours and 144.3 overtime man-hours during the month of January were spent on maintenance and repair of sewer and water mains. 30,510,000 gallons of water were purchased from the Brookfield North Riverside Water Commission. 1,266 water meters were read in section one. Fifty-three monthly accounts and 11 final meter readings were taken. Various inspections, appointments, and service calls were performed. Three water sewer inspection, five meter appointments, and 15 service calls were performed. Fifteen water bacterial samples were taken. Three quarterly stage-two samples were taken. 120 utility locations were identified prior to excavation. Nine water mains were repaired. Two water services were repaired. And that concludes my report for January. Mr. President, Pro Tem.
Thank you, Trustee Sheehan. And now on to Finance Committee, Trustee Rocco.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pro Tem. So, the fiscal year to date, general revenue is up above expectations at 67% of the annual budget and $80,000 over last year primarily due to earlier receipts of 2017 property taxes. The federal tax reforms prompted a one-year, a one-time prepayment of property taxes in late 2017. Sales tax is up about 4% this year while telecommunications taxes are down over 9%. Permit revenue is about 22% below last year, but at 98% of budget. Intergovernmental revenue is down about 4%, primarily due to lower income tax receipts as a result of the reductions included in the state budget. Charges for services are up 6% due to increased ambulance fee collections. Fine revenue is about 13% lower than last year and 70%, and at 70% budget. Outstanding tickets have recently been sent to the state's debt recovery program, which should result in increased receipts later in the year. Miscellaneous revenue is up about 26% due primarily to an increase in payment in lieu of taxes. Interest and tower lease revenues have also increased. Total fund, general fund expenditures are within expectations at 66% of the annual budget and about 223,000 above last year. The increase is primarily due to the new LTAC annual contribution, which is paid on a quarterly basis beginning in May from the police and fire budgets and increased fire personnel cost. There are no action items, and that concludes my report, Mr. President. Pro Tem. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Rocco. And on to Commercial Revitalization Committee, Trustee Casera.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pro Tem. The Office of the Illinois Comptroller opened their online tax increment financing TIF portal in mid-February. Staff uploaded the 2017 fiscal year annual TIF report for both the Village Market District and the 31st Street Barnesdale TIF District on February 20th. That concludes my report, Mr. President. Pro Tem.
Thank you, Trustee Casera. And now on to other reports. Village Clerk?
I have one item to report regarding the upcoming March 20th primary elections. Early voting will begin March 5th and continue through March 19th, and the closest early voting location is Brookfield Village Hall. One other thing to mention for residents, if you are in precinct 25 or 75, which used to vote at Forest Road or St. Michael's, the polling place has been moved to St. Paul's Lutheran Church on Grant Avenue in Brookfield. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Amanda, Village Treasurer?
No report tonight, Mr. Pro Tem.
Thank you. Village Engineer?
No report tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you. Village Attorney?
I have no report tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you. Comedian Collector's report will entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Village President report. We have one item, and that is about the distinguished career of Officer Chester Louth. We had touched on it in the, in the public safety report. He started his 29-year career on January 2nd, 1989. He was an adopted cop officer.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Village President report. We have one item, and that is about the distinguished career of Officer Chester Louth. We had touched on it in the, in the public safety report. He started his 29-year career on January 2nd, 1989. He was an adopted cop officer, truck enforcement officer, breath operator, Lions Club Officer of the Year in 2013, Senior Liaison Officer, Certified Instructor for Excited, Delirium, and Sudden in Custody Alerts, Past Officer in Charge and a Graduate of the Supervision of Police Personnel, Past Taser Instructor, and Past Emergency Tech and Evidence Tech. Chester always had a toy available for every child in need. He would have his own stash of matchbox cars, stuffed animals, et cetera, to always bring a smile to a child's face that might have been fighting back tears based on an unfortunate incident that occurred. He was given a department accommodation for his exceptional effort in handling and unlawful possession of stolen property and criminal trespass to state-supported property. The case involved a stolen bicycle and previously undetected theft of multiple computers from a local Lagrange Park school. Four suspects were held accountable, and after a tedious investigative effort, it was a job well done. Chester will always be remembered as giving an extra effort to any senior citizen, victims who he felt needed that little extra protection. For this, we say thank you, and for your dedicated years of service to this community. We all wish you the very best on your must, much deserved retirement. And I said, I know we're, we're all gonna miss him. We have, we have a lot of youth coming in, though, so there's big shoes to fill, but congratulations to Officer Louth. All right, and next, public participation, non-agenda-related items.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pro Tem. If I could, I would just like to say that the, because we're talking about the upcoming election, the eligible voters of the Lagrange area about a week and a half ago went to Lyons Township High School and the Asworth High School, and registered about 700 voters. So, we're very excited to have new voters to the community.
Thank you, Trustee Rocco. And that's a worthwhile endeavor. It's always good to have voters, aware voters, too. All right, next, any new business? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn.